Good morning, and we'll call to order the meeting of the Regional Transportation Commission. Ms. Quigley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the Commission, your agenda is in order and ready for your approval.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number two is to receive the General Manager's report. We've got a quick report, but there's a couple of people we want to recognize. We are very proud to be associated with, in particular, Councilwoman Steve Ross, who was recently named Public Official of the Year by the Nevada League of Cities and Municipalities. He was recognized for his dedication to, as an elected official, and he's been serving with the LVCVA Clark County Regional Flood Control District, Clark County Shooting Range, or Shooting Park Advisory Committee, and of course, here with the RTC. We just wanted to recognize him and let him know we are very proud to be associated with you. Also, somebody we are proud to be associ-
I'm not done.
Oh, no.
You are so in trouble.
We have to.
Thank you very much for recognizing me, though. And I want to describe this for you. Each Public Official of the Year receives this great big trophy and honor their plaques of the previous recipients, of which Commissioner Brown was a previous recipient of that award as well. And it's with great honor that I received that at our last conference in Elko. Councilwoman March is now currently the President of the Nevada League of Cities, and I serve as the past President of the Nevada League of Cities with her and other municipalities throughout the state of Nevada. And it's a pleasure to serve in that capacity, and it's a privilege to serve in that capacity. So, thank you very much, Ms. Quigley, for recognizing that.
Thank you. We also need to throw a shout-out to Rudy Malafon, who was recently recognized by, received the J.A. Tibberti Spirit Award during the Las Vegas chapter of the Associated General Contractors and the Nevada Contractor Association's Annual Contractor of the Year Awards. Now, he was recognized for his effort to champion alternative procurement methods such as design-build and public-private partnerships while fostering greater industry cooperation that has led to reduced change orders and improved owner-contractor relations. And those are, that's quite a recognition, and yeah, I'd like to give him a round of applause.
Thank you, Tina. Definitely standing on the shoulders of our staff and our previous director and everybody at NDOT that works tirelessly in that effort, but I really appreciated Mr. Tibberti's nomination because we competed against him, some other great folks, heads of public agencies down here in southern Nevada, and appreciate that mention. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item number three, which is to receive the Nevada Department of Transportation Director's report.
Thank you, Tina. Just one thing to report that you probably saw in the news lately. Our Transportation Board met on Tuesday and approved development of a request for proposals for design-build, finance, and possibly operate and maintain for Project Neon, the first couple phases, Phase One and Three. Phase Two is some of the local improvements, but this would be for the freeway work, widening I-15, having the direct connection from the HOV lanes on US 95 to the express lanes on I-15, and some improvements at the Charleston Boulevard interchange with I-15. So, we're pleased that they're allowing us to go forward to develop the RFP. We'll go back to our Transportation Board once that's developed in about nine to 12 months for their approval to actually put that out on the street, to receive proposals for that project. So, it's advancing the project. We're in the midst of buying a lot of the property, the right-of-way needed for that project, so it's going to put that property to good use and proceed with the project, hopefully. Thank you.
Very good. Item number four is to conduct a comment-
Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. Rudy, I know the Councilwoman and I have attended several of the Project Neon open houses, and I have to say, the staff's just been marvelous. NDOT really changed its outreach to the community. Just a couple of questions. Where, is the F Street involved in any of this part of it?
In response to that, Commissioner, F Street is a separate project. It's part of the, it was part of the I-15 North design-build project, so it was cleared on the governmental document for that project, and it's just the, the opening of F Street under I-15, there is a separate project. We're dealing with the city of Las Vegas with the funding, so it's a jointly funded project, and that's going forward separately.
Okay, so that's separate. And then the businesses on Charleston, I know that you're looking at a different access loop, if I recall. And so, the old antique store, I think, was purchased. What happens to the wholesome loft area? Was that part of what? Because they paid to have that light and ingress, and I know that some of the-
Yes, we're currently involved with them under, the board on Tuesday approved a condemnation action because we're dealing with them on some easements needed to reroute how traffic's going to flow through there. But you make a good point that they paid for some improvements there, the traffic signal and the access to Charleston, so we're working those details out and could report on that in the future after we work out those details.
And just remind me, on the F Street, was financing provided by the, I know it was a legislative bill that Senator Horford had done, so the city has to come up with matching funds? Is that what happens, then?
As far as the financing on the F Street project, the financing, the source of the revenue for the city of Las Vegas wasn't sufficient to bond and generate the amount that was in the bill. So, what we did was go back to interim finance committee and to bring forward some federal funds to make up the difference because it was impossible to raise that amount of revenue that was identified in the bill that Senator Horford brought forward and was passed.
Okay, thank you. And the church is not going away, right, I recall?
No.
Okay, I know that there had been issues with that. Okay, thank you very much.
That's Dr. Ohaney's church, too.
Right?
No, we've been working closely with the church, as well as all the businesses that are affected, whether we're taking a portion of the property or the entire parcel.
Okay, I appreciate that because I remember that was a big issue, and I just inherited this section again, or re-inherited it with the redistricting, but it used to be part of my Assembly District like a gazillion years ago, so I was quite familiar with a lot of the folks. So Fred will keep a surprise with that, apparently, on the church.
Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner June Kiliani, just for your benefit, the city of Las Vegas did have an agenda item yesterday to move forward with that. It was abated until our December 5th meeting because some new information came about, but I just want to let you know that. And I would probably say this, if I can, through the chair, to Director Montalban. It might be a good idea to, if you could bring forward to this board some conceptual drawings again, just so we can see them again for the public's benefit and for our benefits so we understand this process, and maybe you can show us Phases One and Two and the direction that you're going, flow of traffic and that sort of thing. Can I ask that, Mr. Chairman?
Could we place that on our next agenda? Is that available? Would you be able to do that in the next 30 days, Rudy?
Yeah.
Yeah, just a brief presentation, perhaps, during your-
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have some very good graphics to show, and it was, we actually have a computer-generated video of what it will, of the improvements will look like as well.
Great. If you would coordinate with the General Manager on that, we could set aside some time at December's meeting.
Okay.
Chairman Brown, could I also ask that we have some graphics from NDOT on F Street?
Sure. We'll put that in the same presentation.
And financial.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, item number four is to conduct a comment period for your first citizen's participation.
Is there anyone wishing to speak to the board this morning on an agenda item, 1 through 35? Now is the time. We have some cards coming up. There'll be a second public comment period at the end of the meeting. Ms. Anderson, on item number 32, please.
Well, and a couple of things, but I'll do 32. Actually, the MAX bus, people that, you know, have been on a couple of times, but they do are eating on the bus with the cases, and the buses should be maintained clean. And one other, one other thing I want to mention, and I'm not going to take any more time, the Sahara bus is a nightmare now. They think it's a free bus, they're eating, but everything else is concerned. So, that's another issue that we need to address. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close this portion of the public comment period. I do want to note for the record that a request was made on item number 32?
32.
32 by legal representations for ATU, and we will honor that request, so they will discuss, be asked to speak during that item.
Very good. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, items number five through 31 constitute your consent agenda and may be taken with one motion.
And so, okay, could we just set 23 aside? I forgot I had a question on it. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor to-
Correction. Mr. Chairman, through you, General Manager, it's items five through 30. Is it consent? 31 is not consent?
The motion would be to approve items five through 30-
Yep, you're right, yep, five through 30, yep.
And pull item number 23. Motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? And the motion carries to item number 23.
Mr. Chairman, item number 23 is to reject the apparent low bid and approve the award of bid number 12-139, bike lane and bike route improvements, Las Vegas Valley urban area base bid and alternate one, alternate one, to the low responsive responsible bidder and approve the contract with Las Vegas Paving Corporation in the amount of $3,999,789.20 and authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. I forgot to ask, so if I, it's the base bid amount plus the alternate one? Is that how you get to that? And what is alternate one?
That is correct, and Dr. Ohaney, if you want to handle that?
To be honest with, to be honest with you, I'm not sure what the details of alternate one is.
It's just terminology, it just kind of threw me off there.
The difference, just in terms of what an alternate is, typically when we go out to bid, we have a certain amount of money, we're not sure if the bids are going to come in slightly lower. So, what we do is if we have additional wish list, we include them as alternates.
I see. We do that in our parks and rec as well, so I understand what you're saying. Okay. And then secondarily, we are being asked to reject the initial low bidder because they did not meet the DBE threshold?
Correct. What happened in that case is they weren't able to show good faith effort, they didn't meet a DB goal, but in addition to that, they did not meet a good faith effort, whereas the subsequent bidders were able to show good faith effort and actually had DB participation over and beyond what RTC's minimum requirement of 4.7 is.
Okay. And then, when we do our DBEs, so Las Vegas Paving has met that threshold as well as the effort?
Correct.
And do we know who their DBE is or are? Hopefully, it's plural.
I don't know the name of the firm offering, I can look at that.
Okay, so they have a subcontractor that's a DBE, basically. And then, do you do, does RTC do with the DBE similar to what NDOT does now, where you track by gender, race, so on and so forth, so that we know what thresholds those companies are?
We have two different programs. There's the DBE program, which just basically deals with a disadvantaged business enterprise. We also have that requirement where we actually track who's, in terms of gender, race, and all of that on each project.
So, you do have that?
Yeah, two separate programs.
Two separate programs.
Yes.
And this is going to be done in the city of Las Vegas, I believe, correct?
Correct.
It's the bike lanes that are there. And then, I did raise the question to, maybe we could get all our public works directors and the entities to all figure out what all the bike lanes should be marked as so that everybody's doing it the same, and so you don't cross over from city to county and we do it differently, or we sign it differently, and I think Tina was going to reach out to the folks, because I think that's going to be very important. As we look at mobility, you don't want to confuse people anymore, so if you've got them in the bus lanes, then they should be consistent wherever. The right turn lane should be consistent, and the signage should be consistent, so hopefully that'll be part of what happens with this, so. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Drivers and bikers, we don't know when it is that we cross the city into the county.
Or into Henderson, or into North Las Vegas. We just, this shouldn't be rocket scientists, but sometimes everybody gets used to doing it their way, and we really should promote the best way. And then, if there's no other questions, I would make a motion for approval then.
Motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Item number 31 will be handled by our Assistant General Manager, Jerry Keating.
Good morning, Ms., Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Item 31 is to appoint a valuation commission, committee to assess the performance of the General Manager from the period of April 12, 2012 through December 31, 2012. It's the practice of the RTC to evaluate the performance of the General Manager on an annual basis. In keeping with the board's past practice, it's recommended that the board consider appointing a committee of the Commission's members to review the General Manager's performance and recommend goals and objectives for 2013. The committee's recommendations will be presented to the full board for consideration.
Thank you. I would make a motion to appoint Mayor Tobler, Commissioner June Kiliani, Councilwoman March, and Commissioner Brown, and have Councilwoman Tarkanie as an alternate. Motion on the floor, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number 32 is to approve the competitive range of firms to proceed to Step Two as a result of the Step One technical evaluations of Request for Proposals 12-081, fixed route services, and direct staff accordingly. We have a presentation. So, for the past few months, we have been working on Step One of the RFP process to determine which firms would be moving on to Step Two. The basis of award, just for, to remind everyone, it was a two-step process, a best value RFP hybrid. Step One was the technical qualifications, and we'll go into detail on what those qualifications were, what those factors were. And to go on to Step Two, a proposer's score needs to be at least 90 percent of the score of the highest-ranked proposer in Lot A or Lot B. As you recall, we split the contract into two, and we refer to the two as Lot A and Lot B. So, you needed to be in the 90th percentile in order to move on to the next step. And the next step will be a price proposal combined with key technical qualifications. So, let's talk about this first step that we just went through. Step One was purely technical qualifications. There was no price component associated with this. And the evaluation criteria, we've broken to a pie chart, so you can see how it was weighted. We first had the management team and key personnel. That was 28 percent of the factor, of the weighted factor. Experience and references was 22 percent. Now, experience and references, in this case, refers to the firm itself, not the management team. Next is the transition and startup. Your plans for that was 5 percent. Staffing and personnel, 5 percent. Field service supervision and operations management, 5 percent. Employee training, 4 percent. Vehicle maintenance was 15 percent, so another large slice of the pie. That was your plan for maintaining the vehicles. Equipment maintenance was 5 percent. Safety, security, and emergency plans comprised 3 percent. Your communication system and dispatching plan was another 3 percent, and innovation was 5 percent. So, you can see the largest portions were assigned to management team, key personnel, experience and references, and your vehicle maintenance plan. So, Lot A, which we, IBMF stands for the Integrated Bus Maintenance Facility, which is our maintenance facility up in North Las Vegas, and this is the lot that will include the resort corridor. We had five firms who responded to this lot, and here are the scores. Veolia came in number one at 89.18, Keolis at 88.82, MV scored 84.45, First Transit 75.32, and McDonald Transit 64.52. In calculating who will move on, we do apply the 90th percentile. We take the, those in the 90th percentile. 90 percent of 89.18 is 80.26, which means we will have Veolia, Keolis, and MV moving on to Step Two. Next slide. For Lot B, which is based out of our Sunset Maintenance Facility and is mostly general market routes, we had four responders, four teams responded. The results were Veolia at 89.56, Keolis at 88.83, First Transit at 75.27, and McDonald Transit at 64.84. Applying 90 percent to 89.56, we come up with a breaking point of 80.60. So, Veolia and Keolis will be moving on to Step Two. Step Two factors are as shown. The price proposal will be 70 percent of the consideration for award. 5 percent will be the interview itself, when we meet face-to-face with the teams. 10 percent will be experience and references, and in this case, we'll be drilling down further into experience and references to learn more about performance, including on-time, on-time performance. And then, again, the management team and key personnel will be a consideration as we select our teams for award of the two lots. That is our presentation and our recommendation. I'll open it up to any questions.
Comments or questions from the board? Commissioner June Kiliani?
Thank you. So, on the general market, MV did not apply?
Correct. On the, the one that included the strip corridor, MV did not, yeah.
Lot B, right, okay. And then, now you also weave someplace innovation and technology-type things, right?
That was included in the first, in our first round, that we had 5 percent that was weighted to that.
Okay.
And you're right, I'm sorry, I misspoke, didn't I? It was the first, the five, five responded to our general market-
Correct.
And only four responded to the resort corridor. I apologize for the confusion.
That's right. And then, could you go back to the slide with the Sunset one on it?
Sure.
So, we, both of these, we didn't change anything. It's 90 percent of whatever their weighted score was.
Correct.
Okay.
90th percentile of the highest ranking score.
And that was 80.26.
Correct.
That for both of them.
This one was 80.6.
Okay.
We had a slightly higher score.
80.26 and the other, okay.
Yeah, and 80 point, so 80.6 and 80.26, yes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. Lush?
Other comments or questions? Entertain a motion?
Oh, you want to see if anybody wants to speak to, oh.
I indicated 32, but I meant 33 on the ATU, did I not?
This is 32, yeah, sorry.
33 is when they wanted to speak.
No, they want to speak on, yeah, 32.
Okay. Anyone wishing to speak to the board? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. My name is Robert Malofsky. I'm the General Counsel for the Amalgamated Transit Union, and with me is Jose Mendoza, the President of ATU Local 1637. The members of Local 1637 have represented the transit system here for over 20 years and have provided what we think, and what has been acclaimed, actually, a safe, effective, and reliable service. We're proud to work for the bus system in Las Vegas, which not only serves the strip and the tourist industry, but is an essential part of what makes this community work. It provides working families, seniors, schoolchildren, and visitors with access to jobs, shopping areas, doctors, offices, hospitals, recreation, and the community's neighborhoods. Now, for the first time, the RFP is splitting the system in half, raising serious concerns about the service and, most significantly, about the livelihood of the system's loyal drivers and mechanics. We're not here today to question the wisdom of that decision, rather, we're here today to state what we believe is essential to ensure a smooth and equitable transition from one to two contractors, and our willingness to work with the Commission to make that happen. Many of our members started driving for the bus system in Vegas, in the, when it was Las Vegas Transit System. They then worked for ATC Vancom, and today with Veolia. With each of those transitions, the workers were retained with comparable wages and benefits, and their right to work under a labor collective bargaining agreement was protected. Yet, throughout the current RFP process, there have been significant concerns that dividing the workforces between the Sunset and Simmon garages is causing uncertainty for both current employees and contractors. Employees do not know where they will end up, and the contractors cannot calculate their labor costs without knowing the mix of junior and senior employees who will be working at each garage. The transition from one contractor to two must and can be done in a way that ensures the continuity and stability of the workforce and recognizes operators and mechanics' years of hard work, skill, and dedicated service. Rather than having the successful bidders determine the garage at which employees will work, a process must be put in place that allows current employees to determine where they will work by exercising their seniority rights. We appreciate that on June 14th, this Commission recognized these concerns and stated that the employees should neither be pawns nor victims of this process, and they voted unanimously to require the successful bidders to hire other current, the current employees, maintain their wages, health care, and other benefits during the transition, and recognize and bargain a new contract with the employees' union. On that basis, ATU Local 1637 is willing to conduct a non-binding seniority-based bid prior to December 2012 among our members to determine their garage preference and make those results known to the Commission and the bidders. Based on that non-binding bid, employer, employees can select their likely future garage, and the contractors can better calculate their future compensation costs. Upon the awarding of the two contracts, ATU Local 1637 is willing to conduct a second bid, which would be binding on the employees, to determine at which garage they will work, and to immediately commence bargaining with the successful bidders. It is our key goal that during the transition period, a contract be negotiated and in place prior to the startup in July. We think this is the best way to implement the priority of employment and collect the bargaining guarantees in the RFP, but also to ensure a seamless transition from one contractor to two. We've submitted a formal letter to the Commission, setting forth our proposal, and we are prepared to meet with the Commissioners and staff to address our shared concerns. Thank you, and on behalf of the ATU and International, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments or questions?
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman.
Mr. Malofsky, thank you very much for that, and Mr. Mendoza, your representation as well, of your members. This may help. We, too, as a board, are concerned about the existing workforce in both yards, and the yards are north and south to me, A and B to others. These were our concerns in the beginning, and we directed staff to work closely with our contractors and the union regarding the preference of hiring employees. I would like to suggest this through the chair and for the board's consideration, that staff should explore a pick, if you will, similar to what Mr. Malofsky's suggesting, to enable employees to express their desire to be at the north or south yard, lots A or B. That would help in regards to what those, those fixed costs are going to be in regards to employees. I'd also like to suggest we take it a step further, that perhaps a third party be involved to, to coordinate the hiring process between the two yards. I think we, as a board, in the past, has it been two years we've been dealing with this? I think it's been our concern for the employees, and it's been unfair to them because they don't, do not know what's going to happen tomorrow, and I think that's absolutely tragic in regards to us putting them in that position. We want this process to be fair, and we want it to be meaningful. We also want to ensure that the current operators are truly given preference in hiring and recognize the seniority of those employees. Lastly, I want to make it clear to all of the proposers and make, and put it on the record, that we expect you to rely on the existing workforce to work in good faith with the union during your negotiations. And I would, I don't want to speak for the rest of you, anticipate that whoever is selected, that you start negotiations as soon as possible, once you have been selected. I think, Mr. Malofsky, and the ATU would be amenable to that, I believe staff would be amenable to that as well, and with the chair's permission, I'd like to see the proposers, if they're in the room, if they come to the microphone, to state that on the record as
Councilwoman March?
I guess I, first of all, would like to compliment staff on conducting a process that's been professional and very ethical, and I'm very proud of the work that you've done. I know this has been a long journey. And I would support what Commissioner- done. I know this has been a long journey. And I would support what Commissioner Ross is saying, with the exception that I wouldn't want to see this necessarily in the RFP process. I think we're well down the road in the RFP, but would like to encourage and support staff in working with the ATU and with the companies to ensure a smooth transition, but that nothing influence or impact the RFP process that's in play, because we certainly don't want to jeopardize or expose ourselves to any legal issues.
And with the Chairman's permission, Councilwoman, absolutely. That's not the intent here. The intent is to move forward in good faith, representing that there are existing employees, there is an existing collective bargaining agreement in place for one of the proposers, and I think it's significant that we recognize that. We have wanted throughout this entire process a fair level playing field. I think it's too late to change the RFP process, but I think this is important for us to get it on the record of what our expectations as a board is in regards to how this transition is going to occur.
I would concur and support that.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross and Commissioner March. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Jun Kiliani?
Thank you, then. This sounds like what we tried to recommend, but that the union rejected a while back. So this is, we're back to at least trying to make sure that the employees have a say with regard to their seniority. So now, the round two is the seventy percent, which is the cost factor. I need to understand how this works, then, to make sure that everybody's on a level playing field. You've got three companies in Part A and two companies in Part B. If we were to have selections for at least north and south, or however you want to word that, then that allows them to be able to take a look at, if you had more senior people, they might be higher on the salary schedule, so therefore their bid should reflect that. Is that kind of what we're trying to do? And this is to ATU as well. Is that part of?
Yes. Yes. We think it informs the whole process. And I would just say to Commissioner March, what we see, and to Commissioner Ross and yourself, we see this as part of the implementing process. We're not seeking any formal action on the, with respect to the pending RFP. We understand that. But we think to make this happen smoothly and properly and fairly, the issues that we've raised and that Commissioner Ross and Commissioners Marsh and yourself have spoken to are essential to make that, make that possible.
Okay. Just so, and I would like, then, to hear from the folks representing those companies, because I want to make sure we don't do anything that impinges, because I think this process has been far more open and far more.
I want to say one other word.
Transparent, thank you, yes.
We know these issues have come up earlier on in the process. There was some concern among the union that was expressed by President Mendoza and others about the wisdom of going from one contractor to two. We're beyond that, and I think that's why we're here today, to make it sure it can happen, and it can happen well and properly.
Yeah, because your employees, I mean, one of my, I shop at Smith's, and one of the cashiers, her husband's one of the most senior employees, and the question came up is making sure that we protect our long term, recognizing that the company's under a fair act, or whatever that is. If they choose to hire fifty percent or more, then they have to at least recognize what was there. I just want to make sure that as we get to the seventy percent piece, that we know what that dollar amount is, so that people don't get rejected because they based it on information that had been, this is who we think's coming to Yard A, and this is who we think's coming to Yard B, and therefore we extrapolated those costs based on that part. And so, do you feel staff would have the ability, then, to recognize that?
I am, Mr. Chairman, if I could introduce our Special Counsel Kent Woodman, who can address and clarify exactly what, at this point, the RTC's role should be.
Would be, okay. Thank you.
Just to clarify, as you mentioned early on in this process, we floated the idea of doing a pick to, for a couple of reasons, both to give the employees a preference and to get some information out to the proposers. And that, for a number of reasons, that didn't happen. So at this point in the process, we're really talking about two different things. After the award, I think the RTC is fully entitled to help establish and run a procedure for hiring, to assist in a pick, to assist in making sure employees get directed to the lot that they want to work, and, post-award, that's a process, I think, to assure that the preference in hiring has some meaning. Right now, we really are not in a position where we can do anything to amend, add to, or change the RFP. If the ATU wants to do their own pick outside the auspices of the RTC and make that information available to proposers, that's really their issue. I mean, it's within their rights, I think, Robert, to do that, but it would not be an official RF, it would not be an official addendum by the RTC. It's really an ATC document prior to award. So we're talking about two different picks. And anything done prior to award, I think it'd have to be non-binding. Post-award, we would do more an official pick, and I think Robert would agree. That, then, would be the final selection for where the employees want to work.
That helps immensely. Is that what your intent is, Councilman?
It is, because not only Commissioners, does it give the employee the ability to say, hey, you know, I like working on this side of town, and I live on this side of town, my kids go to school on this side of town, but it gives the proposers the idea of what those costs are going to be. So this is a fair and equitable process as possible. And I think it helps both. And so I would strongly recommend that to President Mendoza.
And we'll manage that. We're not asking the board to, you know, implement it directly. We'll manage that, make the information known, and it can be used as, in the best interests of the RFP, by the bidders and consideration by the board. That's their choice.
Through the Chair, I think it's, if I'm a proposer, and being a businessman, I'm a proposer to a contract, I want to know what those costs are going to be. I can make up my own costs and lowball the heck out of it, but what is it really going to be at the end of the day? And I think that this helps both sides.
Mr. Chair?
Well, but Mayor Tobler, and then Councilman?
I think there's still a disconnect from what you're saying to what our counsel is saying, because you want them to know before they go into the bidding process on the seventy percent prize. You're saying it needs to come after the award. Am I understanding that correctly?
Yes. Well, I think we're saying the same thing. What I'm saying, just to back up a moment, we've already provided a wealth of information to the proposers. They already have the seniority rosters, they have the wage and benefits, they know who the employees are. So all of that information is out there, and all that information is probably sufficient at the moment to allow people to price their work. We're talking about having the RTC officially help after the award with a pick process. So that's what we would be doing on the record. All I'm saying is, right now, if the ATU wants to conduct its own process, as the bargaining representative of the employees, they can do that. It's really not within our jurisdiction. It's not part of the official record. It's not anything we're issuing. If the information is out there, I assume the proposers could decide how to use it or not use it. But it's just, again, it's just something that's out there as a matter of public information, but it is not and can't be anything that we issue at this point in time. We're dealing with it post-award.
I think that's better understood. Thank you.
Robert?
Yeah, that was, thanks for clearing that up, because if I remember correctly, isn't, there's a possibility even of a different union representing them. There could be that possibility out there.
Could be.
Well, the, the, these companies are subject to, and the union's subject to the National Labor Relations Act, and the, the rule under the National Labor Relations Act, when you have a successor, is the successor's not bound by the terms of the old labor contract. But if it hires fifty-one percent of its workforce from the, from the prior company, it's got to recognize the union, and it's got to bargain with that union. So that's the rule. When you, when you, when you use that rule with a preference in hiring, which we're affording, the preference in hiring, as a practical matter, means you're going to trigger that fifty percent. So I think unless something unusual happens, the ATU will meet that test of fifty-one percent in terms of being the bargaining representative.
Question. I heard a comment from Mr. Malowski that I just wanted to clarify. And you indicated that, I think it was June fourteenth, the board approved. And I'd like you to go back to your notes, because there was an insinuation there that I think went too far. So I just wanted to clarify that, because there's a pretty good public record being made. Could you restate that comment?
What I was trying to paraphrase, and I can state it correctly, I mean, verbatim, was the statement in the June fourteen minutes. And I, that was, that appeared in the June fourteen minutes, which I, I can repeat what I said, but that's, I was trying to capture that. I understand.
A comment was made by a board member, but the board did not approve that statement. Okay, the two very, very different.
We understand what's in the RFP, and we understand what was discussed at the meeting.
Just wanted, just wanted to clarify.
And raised, okay.
And I think your intent was taken as it was stated.
Thank you.
We're good. All right. Now, second question, to Councilman Ross and to Legal. The integrity of the RFP process, certainly in place and protected to date with months and months of open meetings and transparency. Asking, I think Councilman Ross's request to ask something from the proposers, are we getting on too thin ice here?
Well, I might defer to Mary in terms of the process issue. The rule we have in the RFP is we're in the blackout period. So technically, proposers are not supposed to be advocating or making representations to staff or the Commission, except through the Q and A process and the addenda process. I'd have to defer to General Counsel as to whether responding to a question and only doing that would, would in any way violate that blackout.
I know where Councilman Ross is going, and I think the board supports that. I don't want to put the integrity of the RFP in jeopardy.
I think, in response to Councilman Ross's request, the proponents can say that they understand the direction of the board. Of course, we don't want them to advocate anything on the merits.
So that would be a very simple statement on the record, if they choose to do so, outside the RFP process. Okay. Thank you very much.
We thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Mr. Mendoza, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And let, let me just ask, after introducing yourself and your affiliation, after hearing the most recent comments, less is better.
Less will be very better. Mike Tim Collins, I'm Regional Vice President for Veolia Transportation. I hear the comments of Mr. Ross, I hear the comments of Mr. Malowski, and yes, we will, if we are selected, we will proceed with contract negotiations immediately upon, I've told this Commission earlier, that our current collective bargaining agreement with the ATU ends on June the thirtieth of next year. And should we be successful on either of the lots, then we would commence our negotiations immediately. We appreciate what the ATU has offered today, and it's quite important to us, and we will respond accordingly when we're provided that information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, Commissioners Chris Kemper, also on behalf of Veolia, I clearly do not want to violate any provisions or proposals or whatever, but might I ask a question and clarification? Is that permissible or not?
I don't think this is the appropriate place for Q and A on the RFP.
Well, it's not, it's on what was just asked, but again, I don't want to step over any lines here at all, so.
There is a Q and A process, I believe, Lydia, that immediately follows the request for the Step Two proposals. So, and again, I don't want to be overly cautious here, but I, we've been very scrupulous about the process, and I don't want to step over any lines.
Then I'm, then I'm going to forget to even introduce myself, and I'm going to wish you all a good day.
Less is better. Thank you, Mr. Kemper.
All right.
Yes, good morning. David Smith, Vice President of Operations with MV Transportation. It's a pleasure to be here today. And less is more, I have heard, and I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mike Griffith, and I'm the President and Chief Executive Officer for Keolis Transit America, and it is our intent to work with the unions, and you can count on us to do a good job with that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? And entertain a motion? Motion on the floor. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Items number thirty-three and thirty-four are closed-door items. So you may choose to take item number thirty-five, your last citizen's participation, prior to those.
Okay. The next two items are going to be in closed-door session, but what we'd like to do is offer the final public comment period at this time, so those wishing to speak don't have to wait around for a half hour, hour, or perhaps even longer. So we'll open up our second public comment period. Those wishing to speak to the board, now is the time to do so. Now, you made the effort to come down. Seeing and hearing no one, we'll close the public comment period, and we'll go into closed-door session. Can I have a motion? Motion on the floor, closed-door session. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Can we wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving if they're not around when we come back?
Thank you.